Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to resume the meeting. Let me point out some things to you. So far, we have gone through 24 of 79 speakers. Page five minutes, that's probably what's here for about four and a half hours. So what I want to do is I want to ask you if, when you come forward, to make it as brief as possible. There have been some excellent ones made, both for and against. And we just asked if you keep that in mind. Also, let me point out to you that I am going on a list of people who signed up in order, starting with page one, page two, page three. Some people thought that they signed up and they were number eight or number nine, but you may have been on page five. So I want you to understand that I am going through this based on the pages. Also too, I'm going to ask you one more time, to please refrain from saying anything or clapping, because all that does is just make this meeting longer, and we could have that for both sides. We could have folks clapping for both sides. We all understand where you are. We want to give everyone an opportunity that wants to, to speak this evening. So again, I ask you to please cooperate and give us an opportunity to conduct this meeting in a civil way. Thank you. Next on the list is Don Strug. Mr. Strug? On deck is Samuel Glaser.
My name is Don Strug, 141 Bush Lane in Galatin, Tennessee. I would, I can tell you how long I've been a citizen of Sumner County, and I'll just make it clear, I was born at the new hospital back in the 60s, when they built the first hospital in Sumner County. So if you see my gray hair, you'll know why, that I've been here a long time. Because I've been here a long time, and I've seen that film when I got away. And first of all, I want to come totally clean, I do not in any way connected to the government business. Absolutely not. Okay? We'll make that total, total clear there. But anyway, I've been here a long time, I'm telling you. I saw the film that was shown, I've heard some of the comments about the film, and I'm, I'm probably not like a lot of people, I'm not sold on the film. I'm not sold on it, I don't appreciate it. It sells my intelligence. That film, that family I showed you, it sells my intelligence, and I was going to tell you about it. I want to say I appreciate the gentlemen and the ladies who stood up for the better of Sumner County, all sitting in here. Y'all knew what the people needed, what the people wanted, and you voted that way, and I appreciate it. The reason I'm opposed to the tax, which I'm sure you figured out now, and most of you older ones know, I'm opposed to it when you heard my name called. I'm opposed to it not, the figures, facts and figures don't really mean anything to me. What means to me is the principle. America's built on a principle of liberty. Liberty, synonym of liberty, means less government. When you raise taxes of any kind, a dollar, or $2.50, or whatever, whatever you raise it, you're building bigger government. You're going backwards. The country's going backwards when you, when government buys something. I'm opposed to public, public investment in, in property to develop that's private business. That's private, that's for private. I'm going to tell you, I've seen that farm, I like to have it myself, I ain't going to lie to you, it's a beautiful farm. I'd like to have it, but I mean, I don't get one million dollars. But the one thing, government don't need to be in the, be in the development business. We have a hard enough time keeping schools going. So I don't think, any, I mean, you don't touch the thing, and I mean, you don't make it clear, you're not going to change it. But, but I'm going to let you know that, and I'm, you know, I'm a third district, I'm a third district citizen, I've been in Sumner County all my life since I was born, and I'm against spending government money to the best. We don't, it ain't the government's job to pick winners and losers. And I'm going to tell you something, I'm a business person myself, most of y'all know, I've been electric business since I was, I was a grasshopper. And I know what business is, and, you know, for an old man, I've done pretty good, I don't owe nothing, I don't owe nothing, I, I own, I own my own money. But I'm going to tell you something, there's no way that I, or anybody else in their right mind, that has good business sense, rent land from the government. Doesn't work, guys. I wouldn't do it, no. Wouldn't do it, wouldn't do it, guys. Nobody, I don't think you're going to find any investor that's going to hire anybody that makes good money, that would hire somebody, that would give them a pay that you, that you're wanting to give them, that would rent land from the government. You know, government makes a good servant, but a terrible master. And government, we're in a constitutional government, and constitution means limited. The state of Tennessee limits, limits the power. And that's, that's, we need limited government, we need to, every time you make a decision in government, it needs to be for limited government, it don't need to be for more government. We've got too much government as it is, federal government, we've got too much state government, we've got too much county government. So, and I know the older ones here have done, I've heard this speech 3,000 times, I've given government many times over the last nearly 50 years. So, but anyway, that's where I stand on it. I know you're not going to change nothing, and I've seen the film gave the Attorney General's opinion. Nobody goes by Attorney General's opinion, nobody does that. You know what I'm saying? I know they may get a point, that Attorney General opines this way, Attorney General opines this way. Ain't nobody ever winked at that. I've seen many decisions made, they say, well, that's Attorney General's opinion, well, it is, it's just his opinion. And it's like mine, it's, it's a, it's opinion, and sometimes it's things. So, but anyway, that's, that's what I want to come tell you to make about.
I'm going to tell you that I'm against it on principle, not on...
No, Mr. Strug.
Not on my...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Samuel Glaser, on deck will be Kevin Baker. Samuel Glaser. All right. Kevin Baker. And on deck will be Sean Keane.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Baker, I reside...
Shut up.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Baker, I reside at 424 A.B. Wade Road, Portland, Tennessee. Well, where do I start? First of all, I guess it was very nice to the commission to finally allow us people to speak, and for that I say thank you. For those commissioners who decided to vote against the tax increase, I also say thank you. And to those people, I really owe a lot. Regarding the commissioners who voted for this unprecedented tax increase, shame on you for allowing the director of schools and the school board to play you as fools. For now, I'd like to think that most of you really weren't aware of what your actions were doing. To the leadership of this commission, what you did, how you did it, was unethical, immoral, and downright despicable. One last word of thanks, and John Isbell, I'm not sure if you're still here or not, but thank you, and thank God that we have a person like you who stood up to the county leadership and basically did the right thing by keeping the reassessment process outside of the political arena. Now let me get to the real point here. Citizens of Sumner County, you've been duped. Under the guise of strong schools, first our government was hijacked, then our money was stolen, and if we don't do something right here and right now, to stop this Washington DC-style political cancer, our lifestyle is going to be taken from us forever. I can already hear the political rhetoric coming from the county leadership, trying to ignore our points of contention. Statements like, "If you like your money, you can keep it." "If you like your existing car or truck traffic," or "If you like your relaxing country lifestyle," you know the line, "you can keep it." Sound familiar? It's coming right out of Washington DC, people. One of the reasons for the record increase in taxes is the proposed mega industrial site, and on this, I'm a little bit of an expert, proposed by the county executive and backed by the State Department of Economic and Community Development and the TVA, they've decided to push through this project. For your information, all three of these are government entities, and guess what? All three of those entities get paid for out of your wallet, citizens of Sumner County. The projects that they run get paid for out of your wallets. Another interesting thing, that I thought was kind of funny, that the representative, and I'm not sure if he's here tonight, he was at the budget committee meeting, he happened, the representatives from the state ECND actually contributed to the county executive reelection fund, and I thought that kind of interesting.
Point of worry, Mr. Chairman, though, part of our decorum was not making personal tax on any county official, and I think that crosses the line.
Please.
This mega site project has an initial price tag of $20 million. Comes right out of your pocket, citizens of Sumner County. Then after that, they have to lure a big company to come in here like they did with VW down in Chattanooga, right? Well, that bait is more of your money. For the record, currently, right now, there are at least 50 mega industrial sites that are sitting vacant in the southeastern part of the United States. 50 of them. And we're going to build another one here, and we're going to hope that somebody comes in here and wants to occupy that, right? So we spend this $20 million, leadership takes a gamble and basically says, you know, we might be able to find somebody. But then they got a sweet in the pie, right? Like Chattanooga did. $577, they outbid Alabama, and like, they only came in at $300 million or something, but we got these deep pockets, right? So, I guess then they're going to put us on the hook for that too. So what will our leaders ask us to give up? What are they going to give up? Well, in my estimation, in my mind, this is high stakes gambling at its best. At its worst, it's corporate welfare, all with our money. Oh, and by the way, last year, Volkswagen, right down in Chattanooga, they had an operating profit. That's, that's, after all, their cost of goods sold and everything. Cost of goods sold and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
$15.9 million.
Thank you. Sean Keane, on, on deck will be Charlene Hallmiller.
Name is Sean Keane, I'm at 35, along Tyreus Springs Road, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I came here to not express my displeasure with what went on, not from any other standpoint, but fact that I've got the unique pleasure of being a dual citizen. I've lived in Sumner and Davidson County, and if you noticed on the film, how high their property tax rate is. And my father wanted to express how much he enjoys all the wonderful parks and football stadiums and stuff that are there, he would love to use them, but he'd rather sit home and watch TV. But that being said, if we have something that close, and that obvious, that is not worth, I've been in both school systems, both are equally the same, why do we want to repeat that? It's not that hard to drive that far to get to that kind of stuff. I mean, we don't, we don't need a reputation here. And I hate to admit it, but I hold up to see cows in subdivisions, but that's just me. Might be a few old people there that, that know how that feels, but I don't like the way Sumner County's going, because it's going to be just like Davidson County. And I hate moving, I'm getting tired of moving. Thank you.
Charlene Hallmiller, on deck is Laura Baker.
Good evening, I am Charlene Hallmiller, I live at 143 Ruland Street in Hendersonville, Tennessee. I am here to speak about two issues, the tax issues and Resolution 1501-18 and related debt resolution, resolution and 1501-19. I want to say, I agree with many of the comments, including the gentleman discussing sharp pencils, and the second gentleman saying that he would have appreciated the info that was given here tonight, the board voted for. First, for the tax issue, I watched the, I watched the meeting act recorded and available online. Had I known what the board would be voting on that night, I would have been here to comment then. Although I am grateful for the board, grateful to the board for the opportunity to speak tonight, I feel this in no way cures any defects, especially in special meeting notice that may exist. I am a Tennessee licensed attorney and CPA, licensed in Missouri. I am sure my family, who are current and former school teachers, Navy veterans, Air Force reserves, and even a retired custodian of public school, are wondering where they went wrong to find an attorney in the family. Despite my questionable judgment of becoming an attorney, I would like to think I've used my skills to help those who can't help themselves. I used my law degree to become a public servant for this state of Tennessee. I said, I'm, for a period of time, I currently now work for a private company. I say all this about myself to assure you I understand the goals of many of the commissioners who voted yes to the $2.50 property tax rate. Even though I understand the goals, I do not agree with the tax rate or the means by which it came about. The facts provided for the tax increase are one-sided and do not give the whole picture. I earned my CPA in the wake of Enron and Anderson and during the rise of Sarbanes-Oxley. My audit experiences taught me to check to make sure that I have all the facts. My research indicates different results than what Mr. Vaughn, Commissioner Good, and Commissioner Taylor have presented. I don't have enough time to go through all of my results, but I will go through a few of them. For example, despite the absolute value of the property tax rate decreasing, the local tax revenue recorded according to the 2013 audit was a total of $115,009,032, which is approximately a 36.74% greater increase over the total local tax revenue received in 2004. I use 2013 information because I like to use actual, independently audit, independently audited numbers. Unfortunately, the Tennessee Councilor's office informed me that the 2014 audit would not be available until the end of March. When talking about the revenue shortfalls, it is important to remember, the revenue is conservatively estimated in the budget. Also, it should be considered that it is highly unlikely we would have had an double A plus S&P rating if we weren't in continuous shortfalls in the actuality. Another example that I'd like to provide you with tonight is capital expenditures. It should be understood that S&P gave us a double A plus bond rating, and expressly stated that our low debt per capita is a reason for the strong bond rating. Therefore, a significant increase in our debt can affect our bond rating. I've heard a lot of stories about the conditions of schools, and I empathize. When I worked for the state, I parked over a mile away, literally, we had to walk uphill, at least part of the way. There were roaches that were the size of the palm of my hand, and when I was pregnant, I had to use Germanex to clean my hands because there was lead in the water. I understand firsthand the need to restore capital expenditures, or restore the capital in, in the county. But I do not agree with doing it this way, and possibly jeopardizing our S&P rating. These are just a couple of my research results. I wish my county officials would ask for more facts when they make such important decisions. And the means by which this vote occurred should be offensive to anyone who's asking for transparent government. I have an email showing Paul Good received the recommended tax rate at a time when it was capable to be put into the notices. I was left wondering, why wouldn't you put the 2.50 recommended rate in the tax notices? The cost to add such notices would be de minimis, if they need at all. And as Commissioners Good and Taylor admitted tonight, it's a complicated issue, so perhaps more detail in the notice was warranted to adequately inform the public. As for the Resolution 1501-18, I am not aware that the county has a certificate that's been authorized by the state under Tennessee Code Anticipated 1316207.
Thank you, Ms. Hallmiller. Laura Baker, on deck will be Samuel Saied.
Citizens of Sumner County, I thank you for being here tonight, going out of your way and spending all this time here. It's a testament to the fact that we do care what goes on, and had we known, we would have been here three months ago. Around the county, we care a lot about the schools, rightfully so, when about 30% of the households have kids in school, there are about 4,000 school employees, and the majority of our county budget goes to funding the schools. And we can all agree that we should do good by our kids and give them a good education. And one big issue has been reported. On the list of school renovation projects, getting rid of the portable should be a top priority, right? So you know what two schools are at the top of the list for renovations? Beach High School and White House High School. Do you know how many portables are at those two schools? Zero. Do you know how much classroom capacity is being added to those two schools? Zero. $40 million is to be spent this year on school renovations. Do you know what money is being spent on at Beach High School? An administrative suite that includes two private bathrooms. That's right, folks, the principal's going to have an unsweet, in that I see. Now I've heard of four private companies having such amenities, but this is taxpayer dollars we're talking about here. But there's more at Beach High School, a covered walkway from the main building to the annex for a mere half million dollars. This is a pedestrian bridge. I'm all for safety, as I'm sure you are, but this is foot traffic. What kind of superstructure could we possibly need? White House High School, I understand, does need a cruising up, but that includes a principal's office too. Do you know how much the renovations for these two schools alone is going to cost? $20 million. Half the capital funding for schools this year alone is on those two schools. The rest goes to four other schools to add capacity for 390 students and eliminating a total of 17 portables. That sums up phase one of the Sumner County Schools Building Program. Forty more portables won't be addressed until phase two, in the next school year, when seven more schools will be renovated. The renovations to those seven schools will add capacity for 1,270 students, which is the equivalent of another high school or a couple of elementary or middle schools. Do you know the cost of those renovations? $20 million. You know, I'm the first to admit, I'm not, no math whiz, something just doesn't seem to add up. Maybe I need to get myself some of that common core math. So far, you've heard the highlights of phase one and phase two of the school capital projects. Phase three is primarily the less glamorous stuff that's called aging infrastructure. You know, upgrades to HVAC, electrical, roofing, new doors and windows. That work is scheduled for the second half of 2016 school year with a cost of $8 million. Somewhere in here, there will be another $6 million spent on land and infrastructure for a new campus on Upper Mill Station Camp that might not be needed for four or five years, according to Director Delphus. And we haven't even talked about the $1 million added to the school board's fringe benefits, whatever that means. If nothing else, for 11-person mortgage, that's about $90,000 each, even with my bad math skills. Some of you may have seen this little drawing here, and you don't want to get any credit where credit's due, this is lovely, this is very nicely done, it tells a nice story. Paints the picture that the vote, tonight, on $1.4 million approximately is all that's needed to renovate our schools. What could possibly be wrong with that? Why wouldn't all of us just jump on board and go along with it? Because this is really just for architectural fees. It makes it look like it's for the construction, but that's not true. This doesn't even start renovations yet. That makes it misleading at best. So what are the most important things for you to take away from this? First, how can we have any faith and confidence that our money will be well-spent thoughtfully and carefully, the way we do with our own personal budgets, when we see project plans like these? Teacher raises could have been doubled for what we're spending on Beach High School office suite alone. Second, the tax increase just put into place is not the end. That was phase one. I've just laid out for you another $34 million for phase two and three. That's just what's known for schools today. Can you imagine what else will we found to spend our hard-earned money on in the next couple of years? Two months ago, we didn't even know anything about a major part. When we are going to get some honesty, what are we going to get some honesty about what "for the kids" really means? And when will we give equal consideration to our seniors and poor? Parents and teachers, don't feel too bad, we've all been used by a select few to benefit a chosen few. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Samuel Saied. I was called worse than that. Sorry. It was said that my name is Samuel Saied, sorry. My name is Samuel Saied, I came to Galatin about four years ago. Under, I was born in Nazareth, Israel. I came, I lived in England for 26 years, and then I came here to the States. I came as a pastor, and as an educator. 504 Falcon Court. As a pastor, I came as a servant of God to serve God. As an educator, I came to serve the people. Some of your kids are sitting, who, the parents sitting here, are teaching every day. I teach them reality, I teach them the truth. On your coins, people, saying God we trust. I'm not going to write on God and the dollar I trust. God gives us wisdom and knowledge how to deal with our finances. Every day, we can ask God's guidance how to deal with the finances. You know what? We have the money to pay for all our needs. Here in the States, you waste so much money that is unbelievable. Guys, I came to this country with nothing in 2003. Today, I'm glad to say, and I have my neighbor here, I lived like a king in Galatin. I came from nothing. I'm a professor at Gulf State, I'm a professor at Union, I'm a pastor of a church. I work hard for the money I make. But, at the same time, we do need someone else extra to come and take more money from our pockets. We pay our taxes, and I believe if our taxes is handled properly, it can pay all our needs. It really can. And I would say, someone to take their hands off our, from our pockets, to the taxes that we pay, and I think if you deal with it properly, and with wisdom, I think can be dealt with right. As an educator, you know, listen, I didn't, I did not become an educator because I need a good salary. Trust me, I deserve to be paid more for what I do. But I don't want it. I want to educate people. I want to educate Americans to become better citizens. A better office is not going to make me a better educator. A better equipment is not going to make me a better educator, but that's good to have to help me. But the schools can manage their money better to buy all their equipment. They really can. The only thing you need is to have someone to deal with it wisely, and not to be selfish to keep asking for more money, and more money, and more money. And when, and where are we going to start? Because every year, you're going to ask for more. It starts from Washington to here, we heard that today. And what sadly I see here is that this, decision is made, then we're told about it. I think we need to be told about something before the decision is made. And sadly, to here, the beginning of the meeting, we say, it's not going to be reversed, it's not, that's it, decision is made, you know, nothing can be done about that. That is very sad. But saying of that, I want to thank you all. Some of you are my friends, and thank you for working hard for us, and thank you for speaking your mind, and to serve up for the truth. We have all different opinions, but at the same time, for some of us who believe what the truth is, think twice. Your truth might not be the truth.
Keith Denon, qualified for the straight.
My name is Keith Denon, I am a resident of 135 Serenack Freo in Hendersonville. I have been proud to be a resident of Sumner County for the last 25 years. I'm a practicing attorney, I've been practicing for over 27 years. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you, as Mr. Saied did, for your service to our communities. Your job is a difficult one. It truly is a difficult one. I have been to Beach High School. I can tell you, it's atrocious. I can tell you, it's atrocious. I don't know how anyone can expect children to learn in a learning environment such as that. I have been to the principal's office at Hendersonville High School during a meeting when she had to put a bucket on her desk to catch the water because the roof leaked so bad. That is absolutely atrocious. But I didn't come here today to talk about that. In fact, I was looking forward to the opportunity to hear the presentation if Mr. Goode and Mr. Taylor came together, and I've, actually, it helped me understand, as hopefully it did those members of the community who are here today, why certain decisions were made. I personally thank you for making that decision. I don't have a child in Sumner County schools, but yet, I want the children of this community to be educated. And the reason is because there is no reason we can't have a tax rate as low as Williamson County's. Except, we don't have Nissan. We don't have Cool Spring Mountain. We don't have all of those other office buildings and employers provide jobs, and not just jobs, but jobs that pay sixty, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. There's no reason we can't have that here in Sumner County. Just a final closing thought. I was going to recite some facts, but I think most of the facts have been repeated here. I want to tell you the story, though, of my good friend David and Dennis Stradzuski. David is the executive director of the Sumner County YMCA. For reasons that are personal, he and his wife lived in Chatham County. She commuted to Clarksville, he commuted to Hendersonville. They finally decided to move to Hendersonville because they liked our community. They came here because they liked the community. They didn't consider the taxes. But David told me someday at church, he said, "I couldn't believe it. I moved from Chatham County to Sumner County. My county taxes went down. My city taxes went down. I got twice a week garbage picked up. I didn't have to arrange anymore for my own garbage pickup. My homeowner's insurance went down five hundred dollars. That's real money in my pocket because of the services that I received." But he said even better. My child was zoned for a school I could not in good conscience send him to in Chatham County. Now my child is zoned for one of the best schools in Sumner County. As a result, I have to make a personal decision, and that is, do I continue paying eight thousand dollars a year in private school tuition, or do I take that money and put it in my back pocket and use that for something else? That is an example of what a credit you all are to our community. Once again, I want to thank you for your service. And Mr. Decker, I want to thank you for permitting the citizens of this community to speak because as a democratic society, as long as we're speaking, we're not fired. Thank you.
Bruce Reed, followed by Ben McCroskey. Bruce Reed, okay, Ben McCroskey. Dennis Schussler?
Ben McCroskey's here.
Okay, come on, Ben. Come on, Ben. Dennis Schussler will be next.
Benjamin James McCroskey, honored to be a resident of 1001 Waterview Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee. I want to go ahead and apologize, I did know about the color coordination going on tonight, but I am legally colorblind, so to avoid something gloriously ridiculous, I decided to refrain from matching. Here to speak with you tonight on the topic of the recent property tax increase. I want to extend my appreciation for the presentation so that I get a little bit more insight into what the thought was behind that and some of the numbers behind that. I was already aware about the massive amounts of funding going into our school system and for various economic development projects. Education and a good economy are good things. I don't have any argument with that. Not here tonight to debate about the frugality of where we're going to put our money or the wisdom of where we're going to put our money. What I want to talk about tonight is where that money's coming from. Because you see, I don't, I don't live down the gentile bottom half of Indian Lake Peninsula. I don't have a very, very nice house, new house, and some of the more newer developments in my peninsula. Now, I live in, I live in the hardscrabble and top-marked Waterview Circle. My neighbors down in Waterview Circle, they're working class, folks. They're working class folks that try to find time in between multiple jobs to spend time with their families. They're the fixed-income elderly, the protected and served my generation back when we were still little. My neighbors are single moms who sacrifice and budget and pinch every single penny to make sure that their kids have the absolute best Christmas that they could ever have. We're the folks that wipe off your tables when you have a party down at Bluegrass Country Club. We're the folks that make your sandwiches when you come with your kids after school down at Firehouse. We're the folks that greet you Saturday when you come into Walmart doing a little grocery shopping. Now, I've heard a lot of folks talk about twenty-three, or twenty, or twenty-five percent tax increase isn't going to be that much. And you know, at the end of the day, it may not be in and of itself. But when you stack that tax increase on top of federal income taxes, state sales taxes, death taxes, Obamacare taxes, vehicle registration taxes and marriage taxes, and all the taxes that our representatives feel it's necessary to levy upon us, it is a lot. Especially, especially to the single mom that has the criterias of defeat when she has to make a decision between whether she's going to buy groceries or pay a phone bill. Or that grandmother, when it's cold and when it's raining and when it's snowing, has to walk down to Main Street and stand on a corner and sell newspapers so she can pay her utility bills. Especially to that father that has to look his son in the eyes and see that disappointment when he hands him his Christmas present. We don't want your pity. We don't want welfare, we don't want all the money that you want to take from folks in the name of our benefit. We don't want it. We want a chance to be free, to stand on our own with dignity. And I pray that you will stop taking more and more of our money so that we can do so. Thank you.
Dennis Schussler, followed by Ben. If we need to, we may need to start removing people from this, because this is, we're going both ways, and so we could look at that place, and I don't want to do that, I don't want them to have to do that, but please, go ahead, sir, sorry.
My name is Dennis Schelke, I reside 218 Bluegrass Drive in Hendersonville. And I would truly like to thank everyone that's here tonight, and truly everyone that was involved in making this an opportunity for everyone to speak and share their opinions. I would like to express additional thanks and opportunity for the sheriff and his deputies here tonight as well. I'm going to try to be very brief, and hopefully you'll appreciate that as well, too. I'm going to make a couple of statements, then I'm going to follow and end with this one quick question. Last I knew, we still had a state constitution, and there's an Article II, Section 29, that says, "No credit shall be given or loaned to or aid any corporation." And regardless of your core educational values and so forth, I think that's pretty easy to understand. That's one statement. The other statement I'd like to make is, I see there's a four-page resolution that's on file here at the county, that was an eight hundred thousand dollar loan from the county to a corporation named the Airport Regional Authority here in Gallatin, Tennessee. That is a corporation. It's October 2013. Those are my two statements. Now for my question. How many more loans were made to corporations in violation of the Tennessee State Constitution? Thank you all.
Bernie Golub, followed by William Brooks.
My name is Bernie Golub Swig, I'm 107 General Smith Place in Hendersonville. I've been a resident of Sumner County for almost twenty-three years. I'm retiring, and last month, I was the recipient of unwanted Christmas gift in the form of a four hundred and seventy-one dollar tax increase. I was not only shocked by the magnitude of the increase, but I was also very disappointed in the way it was accomplished. I think that if the increase had come in smaller percentages, it would have been a lot more palatable to virtually everybody. Nobody's opposed to progress, but it has to come in manageable and affordable chunks. That four hundred and seventy-one dollar increase in my taxes would have gone to a project that I've now deferred, at least for a while. I also was very disappointed in the way the increase was accomplished. I think that the lack of transparency and the lack of timely notification indicated, put bluntly, sleaziness and a lack of ethical standards on part of the people that voted for the increase. I would like to learn-
Mr. Commissioner, again, this violates the decorum that we agreed to during these comments. If he has some specific allegations against the individual commissioner, I would encourage him to take it up with the Ethics Committee, but I think he's claiming to be dealing with our commission.
Okay, well, the bottom line is, I think that much more timely notice could have been given, it would have been a lot more democratic, and I think we should have had the opportunity to speak on the tax increase at that time. There are other comments I would like to make, but I'm going to keep them to this point.
Thanks, sir. William Brooks, followed by David Ballmer. Is William Brooks here? Okay, what about David Ball, ladies, David Baker. Al Hubbell? Al Hubbell? Bill, looks like maybe Newbury, someone who lives at Caldwell Drive? Going up, sir. Home dead would be Jill Schrum. Home dead will be Chris Spencer.
My name is Bill Murphy, and I live at 732 Caldwell Drive in Goodlicsville. My wife, Mary Jean, and I are relatively newcomers. We retired to Sumner County three years ago. We have been actively involved as a member of our community ever since moving here, involved in supporting a number of community affairs, helping to set up a Neighborhood Watch program for our subdivision. My working as a voting machine operator for the Sumner County Election Commission in three elections, including the Liberality, ladies and gentlemen, were elected. We chose 732 Caldwell Drive, right across the street from Moss Wright Park, and it was a good choice for us. Our new home listed by Crowley, it went on the market just a few months. And I think it's important to mention this, the price per square foot we paid then has remained stable, absolutely constant, for all houses sold the three years we've lived here. All property taxes were paid at closing, but the next year was when we noticed that our house, which we had purchased for a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, was being taxed at an appraised value of two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, almost seventy thousand dollars more than the fair market price we paid. So we requested an agreement before the Sumner County Board of Equalization raised our right hand and solidly appealed for what we were confident was an outrageously exaggerated appraised for taxes value. And we thought we were successful in our appeal because they lowered our appraised value down more than fifty-two thousand dollars from that original inflated assessment to a value much closer to the actual fair market value of our home, and right in line with what all of the houses in our neighborhood sold for for the past four years. But as we were about to leave the room that day, an elderly gentleman on the Board of Equalization, not a county bureaucrat, but rather a citizen, member of the board, told us, and I'm quoting, "Today we got you the tax relief you deserve, but watch it. They'll come right back at you next year." We thought he might be making a joke, he was not joking. They came right back at us next year, along with every other homeowner in Sumner County. When we got our new tax bill for our Goodlicsville home, even though they had lowered our appraised value over fifty-two thousand dollars, our taxes still went up. They went up a whopping thirty-four point four percent. Even if this is somehow technically legal, my question is, can it be morally right? Aren't we, as taxpayers, supposed to have citizen input and vote on this? My wife and I were told that the massive tax increase we're protesting here tonight was passed in a special call, not a regular commission meeting, the very night before the national election, with no citizen input whatsoever. I refused at first to believe that cynical accusation because it sounded exactly like the way Obamacare was ran through the U.S. Senate on Christmas Eve, 2009. Such an unprecedented property tax increase must, in my opinion, ethically be brought before the people for both citizen input approval. Integrity, it seems to me, demands that. You were elected, of course, to carry out the rule of the people in the Senate, and this room of those who do not assume that it is a moral imperative that we live within our means, do not believe we'd be represented very well.
Chris Spencer, followed by Mike Butler.
Chris Spencer, 114 Turning Leaf Way in Hendersonville, Tennessee. Hey, I'm just going to make a few comments. We had a gentleman maybe an hour and a half ago that was very critical to the seven people that actually voted no, and said they weren't doing their job, and it really got under my skin. They did their job, they voted no on a tax increase because they probably thought about all the other things that senior citizens are dealing with. Not, "This doesn't affect me, it doesn't affect me hardly at all." But the principle of these senior citizens that are on fixed incomes, it appears that maybe they didn't think about that, the ones that voted yes, because I don't know how they're going to do it when capital gains taxes go from fifteen percent to twenty-eight percent this year, and all the other ramifications with Obamacare and Medicare. We are like- We are like, really screwing the elderly in this country to help kids that are spoiled, rotten already. I sat and I listened to a few of the cheerleaders on the four side, and their arguments were so selfish. Their argument to take stuff from the elderly to make it better for our spoiled kids is a tired argument. I'm tired of it. These elderly have worked hard. They built all these schools through all these years, and now that some of them are retiring, you want to just take that money away? Some people said, "Oh, twenty dollars a month is not a big deal." It's a big deal for some of these people. It's a big deal. So the consequences are, what we need to do, move forward, is we need to elect some people in this county, this commission, the city of Hendersonville, and their Board of Engraving. We need conservative, Christian leaders. We need people to step up and run. I've sat out in the background, because I thought everything was taken care of. It's not taken care of. I found out the hard way this past year, when my beautiful lake lot that I purchased was about to be rezoned to allow a medical facility right next to me, and I saw what can happen at the local level, and we need to get involved. We need to elect people and get these fifteen of voting yes out of here. Thank you.
Followed by Susan Maynor.
Mike Butler, oh, there's nobody still out there, okay. I'll talk softer. One of our four, our side, I have a Hendersonville zip code, and we're unincorporated. I just want to make a point about two inequities. Well, first of all, I like to compliment the members of our county government. I didn't think you were shrewd enough to pull a stunt like this. I mean, after all, you just found out schools up and in the fall, you know? What was it, two years ago?
Mr. Chairman, yes, again, we have pretty warm-
This is police, police- Okay, I've got two inequities I'd like to talk about. First of all, like I said, I live in an unincorporated area. My tax rate is more like a fifty-percent increase. I have a friend who lives in Gallatin. Everyone's got a Gallatin zip code, and he's unincorporated too, and he got the twenty-seven percent that was advertised inequity. All right, what really put the explanation point on me being here tonight is that I found out today, my former pastor, who wanted to come up here last year to give relief on her taxes. She's immobile, bound to a wheelchair, and so I recalled and found out what, kind of who she made to jump through to give a break to a senior. And probably one percent of the people here know that. Okay, you have to come here in person, like in our case, where we told husband and wife, "Come up here, present personal information in person to their friends and neighbors for it to hear the county." All right, so you've proven that you can be fair. Okay, at least be honest, because if you claim to give a benefit to the seniors, give them a benefit and make them jump through loops, that's not being honest. That's all.
Susan Maynor, followed by Rachel Sullier. Susan Maynor. Are you Susan? No? Okay, Rachel Sullier. Are you Rachel? Okay, come on. Next is Lowell Clark.
Hi, my name is Rachel Sullier. I reside at 242 Curtis Patrick Drive. My husband and I are not wealthy. We are not rich in these terms. My husband's in the construction industry, he's a capital builder. I work hard time for the school system, under a private school program at Rucker Stewart Middle School, which I have for the past six years. And we lived for the past ten years in a very small home, with three children. We have saved and saved and saved by our dream home in Gallatin. And we weren't even there a couple of months. We bought our home in March, and our property has now devalued thirty thousand dollars because someone decided that, I'm not really sure what happened to it. Interestingly, twenty thousand of the lower part of it is our land value. We have a beautiful, beautiful lake. I wish that they would have filled the lot next to us for fifty percent less than what it says it is. Regardless, my taxes went up fifty-two dollars, not a week, not a month, a year, fifty-two dollars. The big thing is, if something were to happen to my husband, we would lose our home. We would be thirty thousand dollars in debt, because in a couple of months, someone decided that our home was now worth thirty thousand dollars less than what it was. To me, that's a whole lot bigger than issue, fifty-two dollars. As I said, I work in the school system at Rucker Stewart. There was a tornado many, many years ago. You walk in Rucker Stewart, and there's like vines in the walls, the foundation. We have a mouse problem. I set traps and stuff, and I work until six o'clock at night, so sometimes when I'm there, after all the students have went home, I can see my- I have three children, two of them are in school at Union Elementary. Love this school. I think it's a fabulous school. I love that we don't sell things. That's a great thing. If anybody wants to send their kids to a great school, we don't sell anything. And I commend Union for that. I think it's just a great school. At Rucker, however, they constantly sell things. Miss Rachel, you buy this. Miss Rachel, you buy that. Miss Rachel, you buy that. I feel like one fundraiser ends and another begins. And this isn't all about the schools, but this is where it started, because I was here in 2012. I stood up here and begged our commission for a small tax increase that everyone's asking for now. It's not possible now. We're way past that, because we've been asking, I believe, that the videos that said we failed small increments. That's where the problem is. The problem is not with this commission, who was stuck between a rock and a hard place. They had to do a large increase, because for years, they just failed for no reason. I mean, I'm sure somebody had a reason, but it didn't make much sense. Our schools deserve better, our children deserve better. My children are not spoiled. My children are not brats. My children are not privileged. They have chores. They have morals. They have ethics. I mean, I dropped them off at Union, which, by the way, doesn't have buses, which is a, you know, a great use of our taxpayer money. I drop them off every day, and I say, "Always be young men in integrity." I tell them, "Integrity means doing the right thing when nobody's watching," because I'm not there with them at school every day, but I expect them to be young men in integrity. This commission has been attacked time and time again. These are my friends, my children's dentist, people that I go to church with, on both sides. These are wonderful people. And by the way, they pay taxes too. This isn't just y'all's money or our money, it's everyone's money. They have a tax increase as well. Some people are just real quick to say they're spending our money. They're spending their money too. As large landowners and business owners, their pockets are hurting for this too. But the thing is, they realize the importance of it. And I just want to say, I was at the meeting where this passed. No special invitation. I just used to be and involve citizens. I like local politics. I like the schools. I like to be involved. I frequent school board meetings when I can. They're a little earlier, so it doesn't work on my schedule, but I just like to be involved, so I was here. And the commissioner said, "Here, are you going to talk tonight?" I said, "No, I'm good. I've listened." There were presentations upon presentations. Everyone had their opportunity. The present commissioners had their opportunity to do incremental tax raises, the citizens had their opportunity to speak. People just chose not to take it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Lowell Clark, followed by Bob Charles on Remington Avenue. I'm going to be good. Okay, Bob Chelfer. All right, Gary Massey, followed by Robert Gentry. Ruth Fennell, followed by, looks like maybe Darlene Roberts. Mr. Gentry.
Massey.
Oh, Mr. Massey, come on down, Mr. Massey.
Yes, sir. My name is Gary Massey. I live at 157 St. Michael Circle, Hendersonville. I agree with a lot of comments that have been made tonight on both sides of this argument. I'm not here opposed to the tax. Like Mr. Dodger said about an hour ago, hour and a half ago, I'm just opposed to this tax increase. Not so much the increases, it is the way it was done. Now, let me say to you commissioners, I commend you for being in public service, and I respect you for the job you do as a bachelor's job. And let me remind you, you begged for this job, and you asked me to help you pay for your campaign so you could go back for this job. And I do respect you for what you're doing, even if that's a tough decision to make, because it's a complicated issue. And so my argument is not about the tax increase. My argument is about the way you went about it. And we've been reminded that everything you did was absolutely legal. But let me ask you, just because it was legal, do you think that makes it right? The way you go about it, you have to take into consideration, how does this look to the voting public? In our society, there is so much distrust of the government and elected officials, you have to ask yourself, how is this decision I'm about to make going to look? When it seems like every tax increase vote, whether it's a wheel tax or a profit tax or whatever, happened on a special call meeting, it's legal, but how does it look? What kind of trust is that going to build in me and you as public service? My only complaint is the way you went about it. Now, I complain to you, let me also complain to you. They did have meetings where we could come and look at the budget. They did have presentations. We do have ad hoc committee meetings and budget meetings and school board meetings, and I have been to some of those, and I see virtually none of the citizens there. You have an opportunity, they're online. Look online and find out when the dates are. Then we get to complain to these guys when they have special meetings just for tax increase votes. But if you think you're uninformed, it's not their fault, it's our fault. We have opportunities. Come and find out what your commission's doing. Come and find out what you see that all of them are doing. Come and find out what your school board is doing. Then we have the right to say to the commission, "I think the way you went about it was wrong." It was legal, but it was absolutely wrong. Thank you.
Ruth Fennell, Fennell, come on down. And then, this one, Damian Roberts.
This is 238 Harvard Drive.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, you're next.
Hello, my name is Ruth Fennell, and I, my address is 1049 Blue Jane Way in Gallatin, Tennessee. There was a presentation here tonight about this tax increase. Unfortunately, I couldn't see it or hear it, because I was trapped with hundreds of other people out in that room. So I will leave that as a neutral issue at this point, as far as whether or not this tax increase was really required or not. My core frustration is the process, and because she said it so well, I would like to paraphrase Becky Erickson, who testified before Congress in June of 2013. "We are patriotic Americans. We peacefully assemble. We petition our government. We exercise the right to free speech. I'm not here as a serf or a vassal. I'm not begging my lords for mercy. I am a born free American woman and a citizen. I'm telling my government that you have forgotten your place. It is not your responsibility to look out for my well-being, and it is not your right to assert an agenda. The post you occupy exists to preserve American liberty. You're sworn to perform that duty, and you have faltered in this process. It appears that many elected officials have forgotten that they're servants of the people. They think they are our masters, and they are mistaken. Many of you were elected with an "R" beside your name, but I fear that you've forgotten the stated core values of that party, which are conservative, pro-life, smaller government, lower taxes, and personal responsibility. This twenty-three-percent property tax increase does not align with four of those five core values, and the fifth one doesn't even apply to this situation. I believe that this tax increase occurred because members of this body abdicated their responsibility over taxpayer dollars. Many of this new commission ran on campaigns to fully fund the schools for the children, and kept saying, though, that they would not raise taxes. They needed money for textbooks and computers and to get rid of the portables. I don't see a lot of that in the current school budget that's been authorized. There's also comments about no options and alternatives being offered. But let me suggest one. In 2013, excuse me, in 2012, Sumner County Commissioners passed a Sumner County Voluntary School Tax Act to create a process where citizens who wish to aid our counties and schools can make additional voluntary tax contributions to pay for extra programs within the school system. How many people knew about that opportunity? A few? Okay. Two. So if we needed to raise money for schools, and there are many people who say, "Well, it's only twenty dollars, it's only a pizza, it's only going to dinner," there was every opportunity for them to put their money where their mouth was, at the same time allowing for citizen input into this particular process. We also needed the opportunity to have a minimum approval, and then hold the town hall meetings, have articles. Everybody that I know is practically on Facebook. All of that information could have been put out there months, if not weeks, in advance. The generic notice of an intent to exceed the tax rate in the back of a newspaper means nothing. In fact, it represented a one-percent increase, a five-percent increase, and it actually represented a twenty-three-plus-percent increase. But until you tell people what it involves, it's not going to catch their attention. You may have met the letter of the law, but you most definitely did not meet the spirit of the law in notifying your constituents. I want to thank the seven who stood strong against what I'm sure would be a lot of pressure. I appreciate those individuals, and we also have the opportunity for people to learn more if they would like. So thank you for your time.
Ms. Roberts. And home dead would be Taylor Hobbs. Is Taylor Hobbs here? Okay, she'd be next. Taylor, do you want to come on down till we, just like right there?
My name is Sandra Roberts. I live at 238 Harbor Drive in Hendersonville, Tennessee, in one of the first subdivisions built in Hendersonville in the 1950s. My father built the home from the ground up. I'm living in it with my disabled son. I'm a senior citizen. I was forced to retire early, because I fractured my hip in many places at work. It could no longer work. So I can't draw full Social Security, because I was only sixty-three and a half. So I'm on, right away, a fixed income. I'm on poverty-level income. Poverty. There are fourteen percent of people in Sumner County, right as of 2013, that are below poverty level, trying to hold on to their dream, their home, like I'm trying to hold on to my father's son and take care of my totally disabled son, who can't work, and I can't work, okay? And all the investments I had, hey, guess what? They just kind of disappeared when everything went south. I'm a single parent. I'm a woman, which means all my life, I've made seventy-three percent of what a man makes doing the same job. There is no money to put back. I have to choose between whether I'm going to buy- I have to choose between whether I'm going to buy groceries for my child or my mess. And that is a fact. And I am not the only one here in this county that has this same problem. And I also want to address a couple of other things. First of all, I want to thank the seven brave individuals who had the guts to stand up and say, hey, everybody's been taxed enough. Thank you. I don't have anybody to pay 10 cents worth more tax. If I am not careful, I'm going to lose the house that was built by my father in 1959, before Hendersonville was a wide spot in the road. And I went to school in Hendersonville. I graduated from Hendersonville High School. I got a good education. I was able to support myself and my son until circumstance. And you guys, all of you guys, there is a thing called circumstance. And you don't know when it's going to hit you. But you better believe it's going to hit you. It will, when you least expect it and you can least afford it. That's when it's going to hit you. And that's when it hit me. Guess what? Last year, my house payment went up. I could barely afford to make, need it then and keep a roof over my son and myself. But it's going to go up again because it's tied into my mortgage. So now I'm going to lose the house. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. There was nothing wrong with the schools in the 60s. Done an excellent education, went on to do wonderful things in research. It didn't make any difference. We didn't have air conditioning. We walked to school. You cannot throw money on children that do not want to learn. And I'm tired of hearing about it. Children learn what they want to learn. You present it to them. If they want to learn it, they'll get it. My class did, and the classes before me. They don't have to have fancy $5,000 of this and $4,000 of this. Give them the essentials, the things that they really need in life. Reading, writing, arithmetic. How not to screw over your brother, okay? Things like that. Integrity, ethics. Vote, vote. And if you're a woman, by golly, be sure and vote. Because we didn't get that right until 1930s.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. The other thing I want to say is, what has happened to the land where the Hendersonville High School used to be? It has been borrowed for 15-plus years. What's seen coming? That's nice, seeing like a new home. I just want to let y'all know that. Pay attention. Thank you very much.
Taylor Hobbs. On deck will be Mike Connor.
My name is Taylor Hobbs and I reside at 116 Artessa Drive, White House, Tennessee. I'm the student body president at White House High School. And I wanted to come out tonight to support my, um, principal, Mr. Lightford, and Sumner County Schools. Since my principal became principal at White House High School, he has rallied and supported the students to become more involved in school and community activities. Over the last five months, I have had the opportunity to work closely with Mr. Lightford through student council and has always placed his decisions of the students and Sumner County in mind. The conditions at our school is something that needs to be addressed for current and for future students. This proposed tax increase will ensure that Sumner County Schools can continue to function and run properly. So we can continue to be one of the best school systems in Tennessee because our students are in fact our future. Thank you.
Mike Connor. Followed by Donna DiSopo. Mike Connor. Okay, Donna DiSopo. Followed by Jeff Young.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna DiSopo. I'm at 101 Chantles Court in Hendersonville. I want, first of all, thank the county commissioners who did do a no vote on a nearly 24% tax increase. It took courage because what you have to do before you start indenturing the citizenry with a nearly 24% tax increase is to listen to the data sets. Now, this evening, what we saw tonight was, in my opinion, and based on what I'm seeing, and I can use deductive reasoning, a very one-sided presentation for you all to listen to and to say, take this. But I can't. And the reason being is because I look at clinical data. That's what I do for a living and I have to be very discernment of the data sets. Now, when you have ordinary citizens, and I thank you so much for coming out this evening because what you are doing is you are enacting your right under our state constitution, Article 1, Section 23. And I thank you so very much. We had citizens come this evening who had data. Data that you did not see in the presentation this evening. Why is that? Because it doesn't fit the narrative. We have got to be good stewards of our tax dollars. Now, some of you recognize because I do speak out on a city level and I can't be at all places at all times because I've got plenty to deal with at the city level. And tomorrow night, in fact, the city of Hendersonville mayor is up for an ethics investigation verdict.
It's a pleasure for me.
Okay, I will continue. Thank you very much. And so what we're asking here is for open, honest, honest, transparent government. Now, granted, there are things you have to leverage and balance out when you start looking at budgets. I serve on a board and our board has not risen any of the costs of our H.R. fees since I took, within all the board, our board has not done anything in the last six years has not increased. And yes, inflation and all those variables are at play. But what we do is we look at the money, we spend it wisely, we look at the needs. And of course, we have wants, but we wait until we have the dollars to do so. Because you cannot be wealthy when you're indebted with percentages of debt. Who does that? Now, you heard people this evening who are very educated citizenry. And when I see money going to a land that the county doesn't own, $400,000, who does that? That's throwing money away that doesn't need to be done. Now, when I see the narrative that this 200, this $20 million pump and call it a boom knuckle is a gold mine, we have to do this now. No, we don't. And if it was a gold mine, the private sector would be clamoring for it. Are they? No. It's not needed. Because we do have to appropriate money to the necessities that some people articulated this evening. Now, I'll let you know also why I am a fierce advocate of keeping taxes low. When you come from an environment, and as a daughter of a mother who was a widow and had to go through a tax sale, because some people are speaking about this. That is a reality. My mother's home was assessed at $160,000 back in around 2000. A $160,000 home with a $6,000 property tax. That was unsustainable and she went into a tax arrears. And I, as a daughter, how'd you try to pay for that? At an 18% interest rate? Unsustainable. And guess what? Today, that same property is still assessed at $160,000 and the property taxes are approximately $12,000 a year. That's the trajectory you are on when you start raising taxes 24%. And I still hear the same kind of narrative that I heard back in my environments. This is a reachable moment. I applaud the citizens to come out because they are asking you to be good stewards of their dollars. And we are finding that that's not happening. Say no to this $20 million boom knuckle because we have a ticket, $18, $18.2 million. And what have we have? Less than two miles of road, no taco, no streetlights, and no ROI. And we couldn't look at where the money was gone because it's in a private perspective. You can't pop a record request post and follow your dollars. And approximately $6 million of that money is missing. What have we got to show for it? Someone had to know.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, Jeff Young. Followed by, uh, Chaney, uh, Camper. That's close. Okay, thank you. Come on down, you come on down and be ready to go. Yes, sir.
Jeff Young at 104 Walton Village Court, Hendersonville. And I am a educator here in Sumner County at Beach High School. And I teach government at that. And I've heard lots about the Constitution and it sure is fun to talk about the Constitution. Trust me, I know because I do it on a daily basis. And I've sat here through the presentations and listened to concerned citizens. And I'm actually thrilled at this process, to see our democratic process at work here. But this also brings me to a different subject that I teach, or a different element of my subject that I teach, which is political behavior. And we get to study the demographics in my class and how this segment of the population votes this way and that segment of the population votes that way. And one thing that we talk about is political spin. And however you want to look at it, I'm not going to change anybody's mind here tonight on, if you have one side or the other. But I want you to realize that we can make facts look however we want to. And when we look at political behavior, there are certain elements that I teach my students and go over in the curriculum that notes how students and children develop political behavior. And the number one element in that is the family. And as an educator, right here, I would like to point out that the number two element on that list in our curriculum is our students. Where kids come to school, starting in the first grade, and learn how to say the Pledge of Allegiance and learn how to be model students. And when I hear that schools, or I guess I shouldn't say that I hear, I see that it's implied that schools don't play a role. Because sometimes I think educators could argue that we could possibly move up from number two to number one in that situation. And to hear some of the previous speakers note that we are dealing with spoiled brats, tell that to my student that asked me for lunch money the other day. Tell me that student that I had to give the pencil and paper to because they couldn't afford that. And to give them an opportunity to see the advancement that this county commission is wanting to put into our education system is inspirational to me as a teacher. To want to continue this work. Who cares, you know, what the increase of the teacher salary is? Because I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at how it's going to impact my students. There are often choice facts that are chosen. I heard several mentions of the Constitution, limited government. Well, let me tell you, James Madison wrote the U.S. Constitution and he said, "Those powers of the national government are few and defined and those for the local governments are numerous and indefinite." And this county commission, for all of these people that want to cite the U.S. Constitution, are instituting their constitutional authority under the author of the Constitution and solidified under the Tenth Amendment that says those powers not given to the national government or denied are reserved to the states. And I keep hearing tonight the courage of the seven that voted against them, against this tax. Well, where was the courage when everybody's complaining about the Emperor Mal?
More, more.
My apologies.
You've got, you've got about 30 seconds left.
Okay. I want to say that the courage goes to the 13 that wanted to do this prior to this, incrementally along the way two years ago. And I just thank you for your opportunity. I apologize, I'm a little wrapped up. But hearing about Beach High, I graduated from Beach High School. And to hear somebody talk about that and to see, kind of, maybe I have a chip on my shoulder because we're considered the stepchild. And to see now that maybe some money is coming in there. I mean, maybe we should go back and look. I don't know, I don't have the facts in front of me. But I just wanted to let you know from a government perspective, uh, thank you guys for showing your courage. You 13, you 15, the voting.
Next is Chaney, uh, and I'm sorry, but I'm having a hard time reading my cards.
Mr. Chaney, can you have a quick, brief sentence after this speaker?
Name, McCarthy, thank you, sir. I'll plug in, I'll plug in here.
Yeah, just you go in with, listen to you. If you need to go in and visit, you can, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, uh, well, also, I have some facts. I've been doing homework the last few weeks about this. And then I didn't get the latest name of your lawyer, your new lawyer. Perfect, right, but 37% increase since 2003. The 2003 no increase is a record, it doesn't exist. You got $40 million more than you had in 2003, okay? So let's don't sit here and go, well, we haven't raised anything since 2003. That's not true. What's got everybody really upset is you guys put out the minimum amount on the ad, the very smallest legal amount, to tell us that we had this thing going at election time when nobody, first off, I'm not sure how many people read the paper anymore, as far as that goes, because everything's on the internet. But you put this out. Hendersonville, just to change its garbage, put a quarter page out just to tell you about the garbage. So the people are upset about that because you didn't do it, okay? And while we're talking about it, that was a disaster earlier in the month, okay? I don't know what this was about. You had 500 people outside of the school. I mean, you couldn't move, it was so hot. You had the Sheriff's Department, who's a great department, but they would just be pushed and pushed and pushed. You know, if this says anything, it says that what you guys did a few months ago, you didn't know what you were doing then, you don't know what you're doing today.
You ordered, I ordered, yes, sir.
Is that because? Yeah, hopefully, this, I'm very, I'm very, so I'm, I'm going to say something. I don't know this guy here, stop, I'm going to anticipate a rule again, so.
There's two sitting back in the place.
Sir, you asked, deny, duplicate, ad nauseam. It's still going on and we're going to send a commission or a commission or something.
Yes, sir.
It's not insulting.
Okay. Well, the thing is, I bought a home in 26 years ago. I am a citizen, okay? What am I going to do in 15 years? How am I going to keep my home? My, my, I didn't mean this to happen, but my, right now, if you increase this, it's going to be $5,500 a year, not $20 pizza. $5,500 a year for a house. Outside there, when the doors are closed, you have lots of people from Michigan, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Indiana, and all of them want those states to come to this day because we're not tax debt yet. But they were. They couldn't afford their homes. If you listen to them tell their stories, that's the reason they came because they don't want that to happen to this day. And they don't want this to happen to Sumner County. This is a great county, it's a great area, Hendersonville, I love it. We picked this part, my wife did, to raise our hand. And it's really good, okay? And we paid our taxes and we pay them all the time. But 23%? I don't know anybody, I think it's a record. I'm not sure. It's what it said. And so, and so I just think that's obsessive. And I also believe that the way it was done, it should have been done in a better way. Because look what happened tonight when people moved. You had 600 people. I don't know what the votes are, you guys being elected, 600 people out there. And I would think about those things. So thank you very much.
Stephanie Vincent, followed by Nora James.
Can you repeat her name, ma'am?
Yeah, I should, C.A.T.Y., I'm in.
Stephanie Vincent, Stephanie here.
C.A.R.T.Y.
Uh, Nora James. Nora?
Thank you.
Uh, I can't read this, but it looks like something Hammond, or Hammond. Would anybody call to that man here? Okay, Greg Arias. David Kent. Come on down, Kent. Followed by Kevin Dykes. Is Kevin Dykes here? John Gore. Is John Gore here? Future, your name.
My name is David Kent, I live at 434, therapy road, downtown. Today, my income is approximately about 15,000 less than it was 16 years ago. I work in manufacturing, a lot of places close up and move overseas. And that's just the fact of life. Then we had a recession, to me, near depression. And everybody's income drops again. Mine especially because my hours are cut. So what I have to do is I'm forced to realign my standard of living. I have to live with the means. Every election cycle, politicians tell me, you know, government has to live with the means, just like citizens does. How did you all miss that? I hear people up here saying stories, saying things that are really shocking. And we have these bland looks where, like, you know, I'm here, this clock isn't moving fast enough, no, I can't move.
Point over.
Mr. Chairman, who's in here is online, these folks have lives, but, I mean, they have, they've come up here, they said it online, now we're getting over, taking them to the death, and everyone playing this up.
Okay, no, thank you.
He takes all the, you want to be with him, doesn't he?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Let me rephrase it, because I'll forget what else I'm pretty much going to say. George H. Bush said no more taxes. Then he raised taxes. I don't expect no answer from you. Go out of order. But how many of you people right here got angry at George H. Bush for raising taxes after he said he won? We have crises throughout the entire country, not just Sumner County. How many of you people, and we're on answer, so I'm going to get a word. How many of you people laughed when you heard about Detroit City, Michigan? Spending beyond their means, raising taxes so that they spend twice as much beyond their means? Putting things off year to year to year? People move out of the area because taxes got too high? Not a bill, that might be sweet. How is that different than what's happening here? Maybe the ratio is different, but what's different? When the elected officials don't stay with their means? When they don't react the way citizens have to react with the current economic conditions? How is what's here any different than Detroit, Michigan? Couple nights ago, I come home. My neighbor runs up to me, he says, "Did you get your tax bill?" And I said, "Yeah, I got that a couple weeks ago." He said, "Did you see what was on it?" And I said, "Well, I looked at it, and I, there on the to-do list on the corner of my desk." He said, "Our taxes are going up." And you hear things, you know, I said, "Well, you know, it goes up a little bit, even though I voted against the increases, I guess I can handle that, I'm still working." But he isn't, he's retired. And then he says 23%? I said, "You kidding me? That's, that can't be. How can that possibly be?" And then he said that they passed it real quick, and their, their early bulletins and schedules didn't even say anything about, hey, we're going to raise taxes, 23%, we got to do it, we get all these problems, let's talk about it. No, it's nothing like that. They did what they had to do to be legal. I don't have many choices. I've got so many years of working life left, and then I have to retire. Is this going to happen?
Thirty seconds.
Well, I'm getting kind of desperate actually, fellas, ladies, gentlemen. I'm kind of thinking that maybe we ought to show the nation something, stand up and stop this. The lower class, the working class, the middle class, the young class, the retirees, the disabled, let's throw together, Democrats, Republicans, independents, deep undercoverers.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir. Was Kevin Dykes, was Kevin Dykes here? John Moore? Followed by David Satterfield? Mr. Satterfield here? Sharon Lovell? Come on down, big next. Please.
I'm John Moore, 1069 Morning Drive, near Galo. I'd like to tell you a few things I believe. I believe I'm not the only taxpayer in this county who feels like he was ambushed. I believe education is extremely important. And I believe that the people who push for this, who vote for it, I think their hearts are open. I think they're very committed to their cause. I think they're completely committed to spending other people's money to get what they want. I think there's something wrong in the school system where less than half the employees are teachers. I know they, all the school systems work under constraints from the Tennessee State and U.S. government. And all I need to know about the U.S. Department of Education was that Jimmy Carter started. I need a school system where they can micromanage the teachers instead of hiring good teachers and letting them teach. I think that's a mistake. I think that before we start throwing more money at a situation which has a negative liability for the money that's already been given to it. And I don't think that's fair. I think one of the reasons why many private schools spend less per student than public schools do is that they have to compete as a business. I believe that many of the students in our schools live in apartments or multifamily run properties, and that we are having subsidized the profits of the owners of those units. I would support a separate school tax based on bedroom units and determined only by referendum. I think that the county commission spends a lot of money on other things they don't need to that have been used for this purpose. Young lady was here earlier with her statistics about us being on top of the pay scale and the bottom of the education. I question those statistics, because they did not agree with the findings I presented. Of course, you know, say 4% of statistics are made up right here. I just made that up, too. The bottom line is, it doesn't matter what you max out the situation off, it's part of what we need, what school needs, what we want to do. Many of your constituents are struggling, we're struggling. I mean, I know I need to lose weight, but I don't want to do it because I can't afford my favorite dog food anymore. We need to get rid of wish lists and only find priorities. We don't have, you know, just because you want more money for the county, think you need more money for the county, doesn't mean that we have it. And for that same young lady, her statistics, who had such a vision for the future of Sumner County, those of us who lived here all our lives liked it the way it was. Now, if she doesn't, she should go back to where she came from, come here, what she thought about it.
Thank you. Sharon Lovell, followed by Nancy Bond?
Hi, I'm Sharon Lovell, I live at 1334 Head Drive in Hendersonville. I have something I was going to say, and everybody else has said it so much more healthily, that I would just point out a couple of observations I had made tonight. I parked way up on the street and walked down in the street because you can walk, you know, on the side of the road is a car park there. When I got here, there was a nice policeman, and I said, "It's kind of dangerous up there. Can you put a car or a ladder or something to help the people get down here?" And he said, "No," everybody had already been allocated and they were where they were. So I laughed, and I said, "Well, you must not have been expecting this big turnout." And he said, "Oh, no, they weren't expecting this." And then when I got in here, oh, no, then I was just, "Well, it's kind of dangerous." He goes, "Yes, it is dangerous." But nothing was done. When I got here, and all these people were here, we were all really frustrated, we couldn't hear, and I don't know, you know, all the music was a sound, I have no idea what that was about. We live in an area where anyone, if you could have thrown a rock and hit a musician who would have had speakers, they would have probably gladly donated for $50 or given you the free and put them out there so that we could have heard. And if you had this much trouble planning for this one meeting, your citizens in danger, you, the people that voted, where you, you couldn't even let them hear what was going on by the speakers out of the hallway? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to respect, if you had that much trouble planning just for the nice meeting, how can we as a citizens of Hendersonville, and Dallas, and Sumner County, entrust you to plan our everyday lives in the city of Sumner, in Sumner County? Thank you.
Mary Ann Marshall? Mary Ann? Josh Bond? Are you Ms. Marshall?
I am. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. My story's a little bit different than, and similar in some ways. I've been a resident of Sumner County for 45 years. My children went to Sumner County schools. My grandchildren now go to Sumner County schools. I appreciate them, and I fully support them. My situation is that I live at 149 Island Drive in Hendersonville. And I had a neighbor that was with us, and she is in her late 80s, and she had to leave just a little while ago. But she lives across the street from me, her name is Jean Talbot. And she lives at 146 Island Drive. So ours is different in the sense that three years ago, our home that was built in 1960 more than doubled in value. Our property taxes went up over 100% on our house and on her house approximately three years ago. We went to the State Board of Equalization, or Sumner County Board of Equalization, to try to make an appeal for this, and it was related to no bail. They said that the issue was a legislative issue that needed to be addressed. Therefore, Courtney Rogers has been very kind to help work with us on this, but we're still where we were, and it's not too much bail. Mrs. Talbot's home and our home, and there are three other homes built in approximately the 1960s that live on our peninsula. The rest of them on our peninsula have been bulldozed down, and gorgeous, enormous homes have been built. We all are on fixed incomes and happy to be here, very happy to be here. But with the 100%, over 100% increase that we had in our property taxes three years ago, to now have this 23% increase added on to that is an enormous amount. And I want the schools to be funded. I think our teachers, our principals do an amazing job with what they have. But I think it has to be in a more equitable way. I don't want my neighbors to be, those that are left, to be forced out of their homes when they've been there since 1952, or excuse me, 1962, since 1960. And they have funded all of this for all these years to now be saying, "Well, I'm sorry." So that's the reason I wanted to kind of say this, because otherwise you wouldn't be aware of it. I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate your work. I know you've got a hard job, thank you.
Josh Bond, is Josh Bond here? Leroy Sutton? Sutton, and then Josh, or Joseph Taylor would be next. Joseph Taylor here?
Leroy Sutton, I'm at 130 Vintage Circle in Hendersonville. I'm Texas born, and I moved here 19 years ago to cure a disease. And I'm now in the most gorgeous state in the Union, full of good people. We absolutely love it here. But over my career, I've been all over the world, and I am now a fixed income as well, I've seen a gross desensification of our country over the last 30 years. Desensification, and apathy, and a pop culture that's out of control, and our tort system needs reform. We've been, they call it a recession, but I think it's been a depression in the last eight years. And I think it's taken a toll on the electorate as well as our representative senators because we are a republic. And there's a big difference. But what really embarrasses me is I've always voted, I've always paid my taxes. But when you look at the May and the summer and the midterm elections, Sumner County is its own worst enemy. We had less than 10% showing at that election, you're going to get what you deserve. But I have built homes in this county, I've used county people to build them. I've watched the economy atrophy, I've watched back to back people selling homes short, bankruptcies, full-time jobs going to part-time. The Affordable Healthcare Act has taken its toll on the Americans. And the inflation is taking its toll. And we need to be aware of these tax increases. And we need representation. And if we're going to go 10% show, we're going to give what we deserve. And that pretty much puts it in play. So I use us as electorates to be involved in what goes on in our local government. And when you look at the school system, the great Jack Kemp, about 40 years ago, did a study about our education system. And what he did is he looked at all the states, he looked at the money spent, and he looked at the end results on the worst, the bang for the buck. And we had a direct inverse with money. And it all boiled down to the fact that he said, "All we need to do is move our schools up to the northern border of Canada." Because those states, Idaho, the Dakotas, Montana, they had the best scores, performance, aptitudes, and the minimum expenditure on children. And it all boiled out to accountability, responsibility. Because between pop culture and 1% or 2% alternative lifestyle influences on our governments, it's got us in this situation we're in. I mean, we need to get back to steadfast principle and morality. Thank you.
Joseph Taylor, followed by Ted Jensen. Ted Jensen here? Okay, then it will be Jay Balm, Jay Balm here? Okay, what about Chris Temple? Okay, Temple will be next. Go ahead.
All right, I'm Joseph Taylor. I reside at 164 Field Crest Circle in Hendersonville, County Commission District 10. And it's been a long night tonight, and so we appreciate, I appreciate all the folks that have stayed out tonight to help make this happen. It's always good when the citizenry has an opportunity to speak and to have their voice heard. And I think that's been done tonight in a very good and a very real way. I'd like to share with you a little bit about where I come from. We've been in Sumner County for five years. But I grew up the child of a school bus driver, a chicken farm manager in South Louisiana. And we lived in a part of town in Baton Rouge that, as the years progressed, the school district got worse and worse and worse, and more depleted and more derelict. And so my parents felt that the only thing they could do to provide us the education that we needed was to place us in a private school. Now, a chicken farmer and a school bus driver didn't have much money to put aside for private school education. But one of the things that my mom and dad taught me is that they did whatever they had to do. They scrapped it together, they made it happen, so that me and my brother could have the education that we needed. So fast forward to us moving here five years ago, and us looking for an area where we could place our children. place our children. I get the pleasure of being a worship pastor in a North Nashville church. And if you think the discussion and the session are interesting here, try planning worship in a Baptist church these days. Every week I got fifty percent of folks upset with me. So it's a normal occurrence in my place. But we were looking for a place for our family to kind of place some roots. And then we heard about Sumner County. What we saw in Sumner County was great potential, great potential. And we saw, because we knew that if we had to, we would put our kids where they had to go and we would do whatever we had to do to make it happen as far as education. And what I truly came to realize in the short time I've been here is that we as a county and our citizens, we have been enjoying the success of all that Sumner County has on the backs of the fantastic administrators and educators and civil servants in this county. And that's what it's done. And it's time for me and others like me to step up to the plate. So I applaud, I applaud what the commission did. I'm thankful that the commissioners that we have this year have put together what's happened tonight. And I encourage you to follow through with the support for the initiatives that are on the ballot that take place tonight. Our family supports it because we believe we have to do whatever we can to do that. It doesn't say that our children are spoiled brats. It means their parents are willing to give them every step they can to be the best American citizens they can. I'm a conservative Republican, never voted Democrat in my life. I'm a Christian. And for many people to somehow try to stigmatize a group climbing a moral high ground tonight is really not the way to go. I thank all of you guys for your support, even the ones of you that don't necessarily agree with me. The fact that you can sit here with your name on a counter, understanding what your role is, I applaud that and I appreciate that. And we appreciate all that you do. We support what our commission is doing.
Chris Kimble, followed by Adam, just like maybe Booth or Adam Booth here or somebody close to that?
Well, it's certainly been a long night so far. I know that you have a lot of due diligence to do after we leave. But one question that I've listened to a lot of people tonight, and I might as well be redundant and repeat the same things.
Thank you.
But not to say that I won't take my five minutes, but anyway, the gentleman hit the nail on the head when he said, "We're a republic, we're not a democracy." There are things that within a republic, democracy does ensue. But I think, as I sat here and listened to an attorney talk about the democratic society and I hear a history teacher talk about a democratic society, we begin to understand exactly where we missed the boat. I think part of the education process is understanding what a true republic is. My life as a school teacher, I do not support the tax increase. The reason I do not support the tax increase is not that it did not benefit my home because her income was probably twelve, fourteen hundred dollars a year and my tax increase was nearly three hundred dollars. So I netted nine hundred bucks. And some of you are looking at me like I'm crazy. But see, a lot of people again have been talking about what it is to talk about inflation. And inflation is government's drug, if you will. It is something that they can use, it's kind of like the race in a hole. Anytime that we need to raise taxes, guess what we're going to do? We're going to blame it on inflation. That's simply just not the facts. Inflation over a period of time, we know that the assessment office, it has been, I've read all the reports from May fifth up until November third. And I do have a question to pose to this commission. Does the fifty-one percent rule the forty-nine? Does it? In a democratic society it does. But what about a republican society? What about if it's not yours to give? What about if it's, my mentality is, my money is my money. I don't need you to invest my money for the county's purposes. Who benefits from that investment? Me, because I pay higher taxes after that because my value will go up. So who actually benefits from it? When you talk about an investment, you really, really need to look at what truly an investment is. An investment is, is that you go out of your new work and you put your hard-earned dollars to the test. You're taking a chance. But see, what we have here is a, not a checkbook budget, but a credit card budget, a credit card mentality. I've heard a man say that, he was speaking that we don't need to dip into our savings, we need to go borrow money. So we can, that's insane, that's insanity. We keep repeating the same thing over and expecting different results. That's insanity. But I come to you tonight, if one individual takes from another without consent, it is considered what? It's considered theft, either by an individual or by a collective body. Now, I know it's already been said here tonight, what's done is done, that's the final solution, but there will be next year. I asked you tonight, as the commission, to reconsider maybe exactly what you have said. The twenty million dollar economic stimulus, I guess I would call it, I don't want it. I don't want it. And if private sector business wants it, by all means, get you ten, twenty, fifty investors, come pitch it to me. I may have a couple of money to throw at it if I can get a share out of it, but I don't want it with tax dollars because I will never see a return in. Thank you.
And Booth? Patricia? I can't say that last name. Kesher? She would live on Bonnie Street in Galton. She here? Patrick Macham? Patrick Macham here? Okay, Leland Dempsey? Okay, Dempsey, you'll be next.
She was here.
Who is she? Okay. Well, come on. I'm sorry, what'd you say? Who?
My name? My name is Patricia Sesta and I'm in the property management district.
Yes, ma'am, that's it. Okay. Okay, thanks. And come on down. Go ahead.
All right, Lou. I live at 1083 Penelope Way in Castan Springs. I've been living there for almost two years now, will be in July. My wife has lived in Lake County for fourteen years. Raised two kids now who's grown up. We now have a four-year-old that's been born this year. We go to Sumner County Schools Bed Patch. We live in Sumner County to get closer to our jobs. It's a tough fact. As y'all know, gas is high as it is. Of course, it's went down. How long has it gone down? It's convenient, it's a lot closer to our workers. We love the schools here. We moved here for the growth and opportunity to be closer to our jobs. This tax increase, not only this affects us, it affects your small people that live on fixed incomes. These people, there's a lady I seen walk up there, a girl that walked up the aisle, struggling to make ends meet with her son in his home. It's just like, I have very, a lot of sympathy for people I get. And as you're commissioners, you should look at this, look at those people. Those people right there will be in this county. Those, their ancestors. If it wasn't for them, you wouldn't have a guy like you're doing today. I know I'm just here, been there to short term. I lived in Sumner County back in nineteen ninety-eight, had my wife. And like I said, we lived in Lake County. Sure, Lake County may have a little increase on the wheel tax up there, but they done it. In perspective of doing it over the whole county where everybody pays in just a little, not where you're paying in, an astronomical amount that's way above the means of people can live here. I think if you reassess this and look at something else, I know this, y'all base all the small increments of trying to get something passed over the last few years, but there's other things that can be done to accomplish your values. I've accomplished my goals by moving to Sumner County. And I'll tell you right now, when a little girl gets old enough and life continues with this, I'll be selling my house, I'll be moving back to Sumner County. Thank you.
Ms. Kesher? And then Patrick Macham, is Patrick here? What about Leland Dempsey? Leland Dempsey here? Okay. You're coming down.
My name is Patricia Sesta. I live in 522 B M Street, Galton, Tennessee. I've lived there for over thirty years. The home is now in my name. I pay the tax payment, nobody else. I'm on disability social security. I do work. I'm a CNT. I dropped a check for forty-seven dollars and ten cents for two weeks. They don't have enough work for me. When you raise the land taxes, you're going to cause me to lose my home. Because I don't have enough to make the house payment hardly now. So when you raise the land taxes, when you lay down and sleep at night, I want you to think about me that don't have a roof over my head. Because all of you guys that we elected and everyone sitting here make a lot more money than what I do, you have a lot more nicer home, you have the things in life that you would like to have, and I don't have that privilege of doing that. Thank you.
Leland Dempsey? Andy Daniels? Andy, you'll be next.
Members of board, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to say that I'm very impressed with Sumner County, Tennessee. I've been a resident here for two years now. Moved here in December of two thousand and twelve. I'm sorry, I reside at 1001 Brockton Place, Galton, Tennessee. In coming here, I, first of all, I want to tell you just a couple of things about me real short. I taught English for six years. I was a principal for about sixteen years, many years. I was a central office administrator for nine years. I retired in two thousand and three. Per capita income of the school district that I worked through, it was privileged to work through, had a per capita, had an annual family income, per capita income of probably twenty thousand dollars per year. Now, I can tell you with authority that you have an excellent school system in Sumner County, Tennessee. I can tell you that with authority. Now, we have, where I come from, we have much better facilities than you because we invoke the one, we pass the one percent local option sales tax. We're in the fourth window lot right now, we're for a five-year period. Well, we build these schools, an entire county, thirteen schools, and we're building about seventy million dollar high schools, we split it. It was basically forty-six million, but it'll run seventy, I'm sure, before it's done. And that's okay. Now, I'm going to get that out of the way. I've been right here, I've been right here. I have dealt with the sins of the fathers. What I'm dealing with right now is the culmination of things being passed over that has backed you into a financial corner. I understand that. Now, all the rest is for the general care about that. I know about the budget. I know what goes into the planning and the preparing budget. I know what goes into adopting the budget. I know what goes into managing and balancing the budget. I know that. I'm sixty-three years old. I moved here because we did an extremely thorough demographic analysis of this county. And folks, I hope you learned to like me because I ain't going to. I like it here. I'm a strong conservative. I remain every one of you on this board. I've never served a bad board member. All of that good intentions. But the best superintendent I ever served one time, he said, "Leland, you need to understand one thing, the road to hell will sometime pave with good intentions." Anytime someone tells me, "We can't do this," the red flags go up, ladies and gentlemen. Because there's always another one. When you let a twenty-three percent tax in a single year of labor, I saw this done and I saw three board members go down, the election after, and I saw the other two go down two years after that. The entire board went down. It divided the community. It caused conflict because people were too stubborn, too stubborn. I watched it. I had sweat upon my hands when I was being asked, "Dempsey, what is your opinion on this?" Because I had this many that was for it, this many that was against it. But if you find common ground, now, I urge you, you've heard it, you have a community divided. You have people who can lose their homes and I believe, I believe, I can pay my taxes, thank God I can. But I have a daughter that I came here to help. I'm working. She's a surgeon. I manage her practice. I'm chief lady. But we do general surgery and we do aesthetic surgery.
Sir. Thank you, sir.
I've seen it all from the register.
Andy Daniels?
We need to reassess this thing and meet some common ground.
Next would be, looks like R.L. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Andy Daniels, 816 East Main Street, Galton, Tennessee. I have to start off by saying that I promised my wife earlier this evening that if I spoke tonight, I wouldn't embarrass myself. But since it's eleven-thirty, I'm not quite sure what might come out of it now, so I might go ahead and apologize in advance for that. I do wish Mr. Wise had actually started selling, because I think he could have made a profit and denied some of our county's needs. My role here tonight is, I'm a representative for our school board. I'm currently honored to serve as chairman for that group. And for me, the issue of funding our county started back in twenty, and I know some of you are immediately thinking that that means when we make a decision to go on the opening of schools, but I should start before that. Because we've been working as a board for a number of years, for a number of months, trying to put together a plan to address the needs that our county has. We're looking at issues like overcrowding that continue to be concerned. We're looking at some of the technology needs we need in our schools that need to be addressed. We're looking at some of the state mandates that are coming down. And we put a plan together, we presented it, we offered to our commission, and we spent two years trying to push some of these things through. And we're fortunate, I believe, that we have a commission now that is willing to listen to some of those concerns that we have. We had a presentation back last fall. Many of our commissioners had an opportunity to attend. And we presented our plan. We had an individual who spoke earlier to talk about the three phases, twenty million, twenty million, then the eight to ten million dollars as we move into phase three of plan design to improve the needs of our schools. A plan designed to address some of the outdated computer labs such as, or not computer labs, science labs at Beach Elementary, some of the crumbling walls at some of our schools, some of the walkways at some of our elementary schools that I can't even imagine we allow our children to walk under. And I look at that and I look at the cost, the twenty million and the twenty million and the ten million, and I did a little research on schools. Because when I first was elected to the school board, one of the things that we were looking at initially was the building of the new high school. Some of you that were around five years ago know that that was one of the things that we were discussing. I don't know if you realize this, but Lebanon Mount Juliet or recent high schools that have been built, it cost about fifty... have been built that cost about $50 million, building schools. So you're talking about a $50 million investment in one school that already has a lot of floor space that a lot of our other schools have, versus an opportunity to address needs at almost every school in our county. Elementary schools that have corridors, middle schools that have heating and air issues, high schools, as I said, that have permanent walls. And so I stand before you tonight thankful that we have a commission that was willing to look forward. I remember the very first board meeting that I ever attended. I had the honor of sitting next to one of our former board members, Mr. Dan Hill. And I remember after that first meeting, he walked up to me to welcome me to the group and what he said to me was, he said, "You know," he said, "The only way that you're going to make every single person happy is to do nothing." And I'm thankful that we have a commission that was willing to do something. Because it takes courage to stand up and to change. It's a hard job, it's not easy. You're sat in your chair, many of the meetings, we had multiple people stand up. And in a satiric session we had over the past two years, it's talked about school budgets and all the other discussions of the pack. And I just want you to know that whether we agree or disagree, I appreciate everything that you do, I know how hard you work, I know the effort you put into it. And once again, thank you for your effort, you're willing, Mr. Dan Hill.
Thank you. Is RL Waisel here? If not, that's the last one, so the public comments are over. We're going to go back to the agenda. And anyone that, on the commission, that needs to take a break through that, we're going to continue.